Board comments?
Board comments on item six. Any board comments?
Just a real quick one. The Southern California Association of Governments, a study was discussed that has, just recently released, that shows that 12 percent of children in Los Angeles have polluted-related asthma. And we don't know what it is here in Ventura County, but we realize how much that is part of our missions. Clean air means healthy kids.
Okay, thank you.
You know, Mr. Chairman, if you had taken this back when I was in eighth grade, was in L.A. for six months, I'll let you odds 90 percent were affected than you could see three blocks away. So we've come a long, long way.
Yes, we have. Mr. Brenner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I only wanted to commend Mr. Vegas and actually maybe stay on top of this a little bit more. Certainly, there was a few months back, there was a fracking hearing here in this boardroom in the evening in regards to fracking in Ventura County. It's been an issue that's ongoing. I think the public has an interest and I just, I know we had APCD staff at that meeting. I just wanted to maybe ask a quick question as to the ongoing process of monitoring the fracking or what's going on.
The district does have regulations that apply to, you know, oilfield production and including fracking from the air pollution standpoint. As you're aware, we, our engineering manager was at the fracking meeting that was held here in this room. And they recently attended a, an all-day seminar on fracking held by the South Coast Air Quality Management District. He's an ex-employee of Conoco and is really up on oilfield production. He's a petroleum engineer. So we are tracking the issue closely and I just want to, well, the one thing he stressed to me is when you look at fracking in the United States, especially in places like Pennsylvania, it's done very shallow. And that's where you've had the incidents with groundwater. In Ventura County, the fracking is, our understanding is done much deeper below the rock. So there's less of a chance of that type of problem.
Yeah, Mr. Vegas.
I might say, you say "our understanding," but I think that's one of the issues for the public because people don't know.
Exactly.
I mean, just disclosures and transparency seems to be the appropriate way to handle all this uncertainty about it.
And thank you, and that was my reason for bringing it up. Obviously, there's two, there's not enough information, the realization that the United States is actually becoming somewhat of, or going to become an oil exporter through the use of some of these technologies. And the question is, are they appropriate technologies in the right place? And certainly, I am, well, the, I would say that the sides are still differing, but any transparency and understanding this board could get of it helps to be advocates for or against depending where this information lies. So I appreciate your involvement in keeping us informed on that.
What I could do is next year have a study session on fracking for your board.
That'd be good.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other board comments?
Just one comment. Mike, I, did you read the article in the paper yesterday, I think it was yesterday before, about methane, farming methane in, what do you mean, hardy?
Only briefly, I didn't read the email article, no.
Very interesting. We have a whole goal here someday of something that won't be near as polluting as what we've got, a potential resource for, you know, powertrain. It's a great article.
Have to do a field trip. No, that's good.
Trust me, the ice has been continuing to melt, but I've plenty of time to do that.
Send a link, Mike, that'd be good to look at it. Okay, consent agenda items eight and nine?
Second.
Motion second to approve those items. Any objection? Hearing none, so ordered. Item eight, oh, that was, we just did that, eight and nine. Item 10, Mr. Vegas.
Chair, long members of the board, I'm Mike Vegas, air pollution control officer. There should be a slide coming up soon and here it is. And what it shows is the progress that Ventura County's made over the past few decades. And when you look at the red jagged line on the bottom, that's the old one-hour standard and that, that's, I think that, we have to give that one to Dick Baldwin because we actually achieved that standard ahead of schedule, was due in 2005, achieved that in 2002. The green line above that is the 1997 federal eight-hour ozone standard, a much more stringent standard that we achieved in 2011. And how it works is actually you're allowed three days, they, they look at your fourth highest day as your design value for that standard. So in essence, you're allowed to have three days over the standard. And last year, we had three days over the standard and then in 2011, this year to date, though it's still, it's not official data yet, it's not been quality assured, but it looks like only one day over the standard. So this is a remarkable achievement when you go back to the 70s and you look at 150 days over the standard. In September of this year, the United States Environmental Protection Agency issued a direct final rule proposing to find that Ventura County and several other counties in California had attained the 1997 standard. This rule action would officially recognize our attainment of that standard and would set aside some of the planning requirements we have under our air quality management plan. Unfortunately, EPA received a negative comment on that rulemaking unrelated to Ventura County, related to Amador County. The comment period is closed and EPA actually pulled back that rulemaking to address the comment. However, they expect to finalize the rulemaking at the end of this month and determine that we've actually obtained the standard. It's a major milestone for, in our efforts to clean the air in this county, and this is a major public health issue. When I look at this standard, my goal was to achieve this standard during my career and to actually get there is, is quite remarkable because when we sat down 10 years ago to look at this standard, many of us in that conference room felt, I don't know how we're going to get there. We made it to the one-hour standard, but what are we going to do next? And to me, my goal has always been to take care of that Simi Valley cross-country team out of Simi, you know, we're taking care of Sarah Baxter, the phenom out there. And I think we've actually got to that goal at least. But I also want to thank the California Air Resources Board because without their efforts on cars and light-duty trucks and heavy-duty diesel trucks, we would have never made it this far. And the US EPA's efforts on locomotives and including their new efforts now to address shipping emissions are going to be major steps forward for us. Also need to thank VCTC and SCAG for their efforts in coming up with transportation plans that actually are consistent with the air quality management plan. And the public, because they've been out there buying those electric mowers, looking at the low rolling resistant tires. But I really want to thank county businesses. I believe the district's pragmatic approach to regulation mixed with the pragmatic approach we have from business in this county, especially Vicita and Western State Petroleum Association that understood, they, they working in a non-attainment area, there's going to be regulations, let's just make them reasonable, allowed us to implement numerous control measures to reduce emissions without creating an undue burden on our local economy. What you see on the top of that graph is the blue line and that's the 2008 75-part-per-billion standard that we need to achieve. It looks like in a timeframe of 2021 is what it's going to be for Ventura County. We had 13 days over the standard last year. You see a little uptick because obviously, if you remember last summer, I mean, the recent summer, quite warm. The summer before, we didn't have a summer, it felt like. And you can really see where meteorology plays a role in this. And meteorology is really what causes the jagged line, the sawtooth approach there. There's some challenges ahead. And the first one is, there's the possibility that they may make the 75-part-per-billion standard more stringent. And EPA is looking at a range somewhere between 60 to 70 parts-per-billion. With the current state of the economy, it's hard to say if the administration will push EPA to make that change. That would be very difficult to achieve something in the 60 to 70 part-per-billion range. You're starting to get close to background concentration. The other big challenge, and it's going to be addressed in our next item, is in order to continue making progress, especially on the light-duty car and truck side, we're going to need to see advanced technology vehicles. And as you're aware, we need to overcome the price barrier and the public perception barrier with these issues to get these out into the marketplace. And lastly, we're working with a federal cleaner act that hasn't been updated since 1990 and it's going to need to be updated. For example, the federal cleaner act requires what they call reasonable further progress. And that is that you need to reduce your emissions 3 percent per year, every year, as you work towards that standard. And that, the thought being is they don't want an area to sit back on adopting rules until five years or three years before the standard and do all their control measures right at the end and leave the public breathing dirty air for some period before that. So they set this requirement up. Well, that was, it was quite easy to meet for the district to satisfy this requirement when we were adopting the power plant rules, the oilfield rules, the large internal combustion engine rules that we adopted. Now that we've accomplished that, the amount of fruit left on the tree is up high, the low-hanging fruit's gone, it's up high, it's expensive, and there's not that much left as far as reductions coming. We'll continue to do everything in our power to implement all feasible measures, as your board's aware. But there isn't an out in the federal cleaner act as there is in the California cleaner act that says if you've implemented all feasible measures, you're showing good progress. And this is one of the things that is going to need to be addressed in the near future. And just to really bring this point out, we were unable to show RFP, reasonable further progress, for the 1997 standard, the plan we adopted in 2007. Even though we attained the standard in 2011, two years before our 2013 deadline, so we can meet the air quality goals for public health, we just can't meet some of the administrative requirements anymore. And this, we're not the only area in the country that with this issue. That's all I have. I also really want to thank district staff and your board because there were some tough rules when we adopted the oilfield rules and the power plant rules. It was not exactly a love fest in this room where those rules were adopted.
Sure wasn't. There wasn't.
That's all I have.
Other questions?
Questions?
That chart you had up there, I think it's a good example of people working hard over the years and things doing it, but it's at that point where you just said, we spent a lot of money to get there and we could spend millions and millions and millions to get very minute. We should probably wait till technology catches up to make some of this all happen because you'd hate to, there's a lot of places money needs to go, but that, we've got to maintain that, which is good. But it's just an opportunity to see that you do the right things, but we can't get so extreme that we destroy everything else we're doing ahead of time. So, thanks.
Yeah, I think you raise a very good point. One of the things in the federal act that has been discussed is when you set these standards, the Congress is not allowed to consider cost or technical feasibility in meeting the standard, only the medical studies. And you could set a standard, I think you're very close to potentially setting a standard where technology isn't available at this time. As a matter of fact, for even for the 75-part-per-billion standard, the current standard, South Coast Air Quality Management, they've done some preliminary modeling and it shows they basically need to eliminate combustion in their basin.
Combustion what?
Combustion. You need to eliminate combustion.
In the whole basin?
That's a frightening prospect.
Right, and then it gets extreme to the point you have to do that, you know it can't be done, and so then you got these problems. Instead of just waiting till new technologies come around that you could do that with, yeah.
Yes.
Well, but as you, and you started out in this report, Mike, you said, when we started down this road, we all thought, how are we going to get there? So I guess we just will have to continue to work collaboratively with the other basins, learn from best practices, continue to implement where we can and, and reach higher up that tree. Michael.
You know, there's other places like Denver. If you go there in the wintertime sometime, you'll see, like L.A., it used to be in Denver. Have they corrected their problem?
I'm not 100% up to speed. They have a wintertime problem, very similar to our summertime problem, where they get, they get temperature inversions. And Denver's in a valley and they actually don't have a smog ozone problem, they have a carbon monoxide problem in the winter. And they reformulated their gasoline in a different manner than us to address that.
Okay, it's a receiving foul action?
A move approval.
Second.
Motion second and objection, hearing none, so ordered. Thank you, appreciate. We should take the time to applaud all staff and thank you all for your good work on that. And Barbara, always appreciate how, why you put the story out there. Thank you. Good one. Okay, item 11 is approval of the Department of Motor Vehicles grant funding. Good morning, Stip.
Good morning. Chair, long members of the board, I'm Stan Callen, air quality engineer. Since last year, APCD has become a lead agency supporting electric vehicles and electric vehicle charging infrastructure. Last meeting, your board approved subcontract for our planning grant, which is $200,000 from the Energy Commission. This grant can only be used for planning-type purposes under state guidelines. Those subcontract have been signed and work is proceeding on our EV charging plan along the central coast. I'm also happy to report that we have now an EV charging station in front of our office at 669 County Square Drive. We have three charging stations. They do have a keypad, which is not operating just yet, but it's there if we need to limit access. But that's been a big step for us to get back in the EV charging world. We are planning, at least Mike has mentioned, getting a plug-in vehicle ourselves in our fleet because our fleet is aging. One of the vehicles actually died, one of our hybrids actually died. And I would encourage all board members to consider the same for your fleets as well. Regarding funding sources for EV charging stations, there are two sources currently that are nearing their deadlines. One of them is federal source and that one, the equipment has to be installed by the end of the year. So that one is in fact one of the projects we're proposing today. The other is a state funding source, which is the Clipper Creek Program, which expires February of 2013. As part of this year's budget, $25,000 was allocated using DMV fees, which are reserved for motor vehicle emission projects, which obviously EV projects are. And the two projects we're proposing today, one is for the Ventura Harbor charging station located near Island Packers. And those are two charging, two level-two charging stations. The grant amount is up to $4,668. The other project is for Cal State Channel Islands and Camarillo, and that's for five level-two stations at a price up to $20,332. Both of these sites are, will be popular with EV drivers and will, will be an opportunity to highlight the technology for people to come by and look at the vehicles themselves. So hopefully, they'll, they'll catch on, people will see the cars and then want to own them one themselves. The request also involves approval of grant agreements for each of the grantees and authorizes APCO to sign these agreements, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions? Please, Brian, then Mike.
I mean, I'll just start off maybe your comment, and I think this is appropriate. And I want to thank staff for, I know we're getting down to the wire, a lot of us were receiving emails in the past that the funds were closing down and were concerned about the ability to get the, the projects and to get the charging stations out there. So Stan, I want to thank you and staff for really pressing ahead and making sure we got there. I know there was some concern about, you know, the security of the systems, if they were going to be charged, if they're going to pay to charge and things like that. We solved that issue, I think, through, through county council, and I want to just thank everybody for pressing ahead. I think it's important that once we do have them in, that we do a little bit of advertising. I know my city has four of them and I was surprised when I pulled them in the other day, there, there they were. I hadn't heard a word about it. But good news is, get it in, we'll advertise it later because it's closing down. So just want to say thank you and happy to move this item.
There's a card, speaker card, hold on a second.
Oh, excuse me, thank you.
Mr. Morgan.
You know, Stan, one more time, one more thing. I'm just curious because the university is encouraging students to park out of the train station.
Right.
And it's full, I mean, it's full. The businesses are complaining because they can't park across the street. But now they'll start working on the other side of the track. It seems to me if a lot of the vehicles, they're coming from the university and it's next to the freeway where people can pull off and use it too, you couldn't have, that couldn't have been considered as one of the spots. I know that Roadrunner said they want, they're going to buy a whole piece of land along the railroad track and they were going to put those in, they want to put those in there.
That's a great idea.
So I would have think it got more use, which I, you know, that's what we're trying to do. If it sits out there and it's not being used, people are going to say it's not being used. But if you've got in a, a good area where people can see it, know it, and know where to go, and it's easy to get back on the freeway, it seems to me that would have been a perfect spot to do it.
Oh, yeah, I think that's, that's a good idea for, for future projects, definitely. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Stan. Let me call up Michael Stubblefield, want to comment on this item?
Board members, good morning. I'm Mike Stubblefield, I'm here representing the Sierra Club and the Plug-In Vehicle Collaborative of Ventura and Santa Barbara Counties. I think Stan's already laid out the reasons why you should support this request for funding. So I'm not going to get into the mechanics or details of it. I think that's been laid out well in this background information that you've been provided. But I just want to say that I, I think that these two particular spots are significant because one of them, obviously putting something down by, between National, the Channel Islands National Park Headquarters and Island Packers, that's a tourist destination. So people who have electric cars who might want to visit that area would quickly find out that that's a place where they can leave their electric vehicle, get it charged while they take a ride out to the islands or while they go to the park headquarters. And there's a bunch of little art galleries down there in Bistro's. So it's kind of a, a nice place to put some charging stations because it'll receive a lot of visibility from not just locals, but from people from out of county. CSU Channel Islands is a good place because from day one, CSU Channel Islands has wanted to become a green campus. In fact, I was one of the people and some of you as well participated in the green planning for the camp, for the campus when it first started. So I think it's a good idea to have charging stations there, the more, the better, both for faculty and for students who can afford electric vehicles or hybrids because it sets an example. And some people who get used to the idea of having an electric car and charging it at school will then go on from there after they graduate and expect to see that kind of infrastructure wherever they decide to live. So I think, you know, this is two more pieces of the puzzle. And unlike the billion, multi-billion-dollar bullet train boondoggle you may have read about in the LA Times this morning, which looks like the train from nowhere to nowhere is going to cost a fortune, this is real-world technology that can enable people to, can make it more practical to own, to buy and own electric cars right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question? What do you think about encouraging employers to put these in and whether it's, I know we, for example, put, put together grants for generators for farmers to see that they get off of the, you know, diesel, you know, polluting generators or even for boats in our, you know, private boats so that, it's just a way to reduce pollution. But I would think that you may be able to attract more with employers than you would at, you know, destinations like.
Realistically? I think it would work with large firms like Baxter's or Amgen. I worked for a company that had 50 or less employees in the United States. I don't know if they could have afforded it.
So the large employers.
Pardon me?
Large employers.
But large employers, certainly. I think, you know, you need to start with them. I think the whole key is making electric vehicles seem more practical. And we all know right now that they're, you know, their popularity is limited, is contingent upon expanding their range. It's as simple as that. So, yeah, I think that would be good. And I think that progressive employers like Amgen and Baxter's and other large employers in the county, they get some PR out of it and they have lots of money. And they are forward-thinking companies in many ways, so they probably would be amenable.
And you're right, you know, they have enough funds to take care of it themselves. Maybe they could use a little push from us, though.
I mean, Amgen even has its own car rental agency.
That's right.
Certainly have the volume.
You know, there's, there's something else along that line, I read the article about the thing the other day. Well, there's something else that's coming online now that to me is outstanding. It's called a hydrogen cell. We know what hydrogen cells are. These are workable ones that they're attaching to phones and other things that you don't have to go recharge because this will keep it going. It's a, it's brand-new, but that eventually could be something that goes on a car, to recharge that car and make its mileage much longer.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Stubblefield.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments, sir? Okay, the item is before us for action, approval, for motion?
She'll move.
Motion, second. Any objection to that?
No, I, I would encourage, you know, that maybe staff to come back and with a proposal of reaching out to some of the large employers to encourage them to do likewise.
You, you bring up a very good point. I think in the past, there I think in the past, there actually were hospitals that had installed them because they, they found through surveys that medical professionals were some of the early adopters of this. And I think Amgen, Baxter would probably fit into that same fold. So something we'll definitely look at.
Mike, how much does it cost to charge a car?
Hi. It's like a dollar gallon equivalent.
It's what?
Dollar gallon.
I know, but, but who's paying for that?
Who's paying for it? The person who's supplying the power.
That's what I meant, so I mean.
But these charging stations have the ability to collect, oh, sorry.
They have the ability to collect fees. They can bill the users. They have, ours has a keypad, there's credit card access. So that's something.
I was just wondering, I mean, if you set them up in public places, then the public is paying for it. The taxpayer pays for it?
Unless we have the keypad access.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, again, motion and second and objection, hearing none, so ordered. Thank you. Move on to item 12, which is a public hearing regarding adoption of service rates and fees.
Pursuant to Health and Safety Code, the district is permitted to recover our costs for implementing mandated programs under the federal and California Cleaner Acts. And one of the ways we do that is through our service rates and fees. Similar to previous years, there are three main types of charges. The service rates and fees are made up of service hourly rates, duplication fees, and miscellaneous fees. The service hourly rate reflects the cost of a particular worker classification, including salary, benefits, and allocated overhead. Duplication fees are related to the consist of charges for processing Public Records Act requests and subpoenaed records, and miscellaneous fees deal with bad checks and witness fees. I have good news. Based on our study of the salaries, there's no change to the service rate for the permit engineer, and that is the main charge that's levied on the regulated community in the processing of authorities construct and permits to operate. So in essence, the processing charge permits are staying level, even though we're having upward push from our cost allocation plan through the county and of course, retirement contribution. We had a slight increase in cost for the air quality, air quality specialist position, and we saw a decrease for the air quality instrument technician and meteorologist positions. And I think we're doing quite well. And I think the result, you've seen those, those charges basically stay flat is because of management reorganization we implemented, which reduced the allocated overhead, even though there's been pressure on the benefit side of the equation. There's no changes to duplication fees or the miscellaneous fees proposed for this fiscal year. So we're recommending that your board adopt the attached resolution establishing the fiscal year 2012/13 service rates and fees.
Okay, questions? Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll move the recommended action.
Motion and a second. Any objection to that?
Mike, you always do a great job.
It's a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak? I didn't have any cards submitted, closed public hearing. Motion a second, no objection to that. So ordered. That's pretty amazing. Rates and fees with no objections.
Good job, Mike.
Yeah, good job. Thank you.
And Stan.
All right, next up then we have item 13, receiving file, unaudited report.
The unaudited financial status report. I'm quite pleased to let you know that it looks like the district had a net savings of $758,000 in the prior fiscal year. And that's 2011/12. Our actual revenue from, our actual revenue was above the adopted budget due to increases in fines and penalties, which we tend to expect each year. On the expenditure side, they were below adopted appropriations. We had significant salary savings, mostly from the deferral of filling some positions that were, became vacant due to retirement. We're analyzing each position to make sure that we actually do need to fill them. So, and some we will and some we won't. There were also savings in services and supplies. We saw a decrease in our travel costs, decreases in professional services, and a decrease in some of the advertising costs for our public information program. Lastly, in attachment four, there is the unaudited financial status report for the pass-through grant portion of the budget. As you're aware, with the pass-through grants, including administration costs, expenditures, and revenues are always equal. So they do not affect the district's financial bottom line. That's all I have. It's quite good news for another year.
Excellent news. Questions? Okay. No questions, no public requests, so motion?
Receiving file?
Motion and second, receiving file, and objections being none, so ordered. Thank you.
Great work.
Always good to get good news. Item 14, receiving file application for state subvention funds.
So moved.
Motion and second, any objection? Hearing none, so ordered. Item 15.
So moved.
Minutes. Anything to report on that? South Coast basin? Nope?
Oh, sorry.
I gave you that opportunity.
He got me going. Go, 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 go.
I'd like to hear him talk.
At least I give a report. Did you review some of the things that we did? Because there's, there's one that was really kind of fun. That was one of some common Brussels sprouts up here. Brussels sprouts from central California, all the way to the port to be treated, immigrated, all the way back to be, put into, you know, frozen, and then all the way back to port to be shipped. My suggestion was, why don't you ship them from Port Juani? And also they may, with that line, they may also look at their own cremation plant because they'll have no money. And so I've been trying to help Port Juani.
Thank you, Mike.
But you might go ahead and review some of the other things.
Yeah, real quick, this is a, I gave a brief update on the future of basically light-duty vehicle in California and a projection on what ARB really thinks is going to happen. I can give your board a really short overview of that in a study session format next year, but it, bottom line is the internal combustion cars by 2050 is going to be the minority of the vehicles on the road. It's going to be heavily, battery vehicles will be a player, but what they're banking on is fuel cell vehicles in the future. And that's, that's a major change and we gave a lot of talk. I also gave a cost estimate on hydrogen refueling stations. We talked about the emission reduction credit shortfall that's really become a problem in the Santa Barbara district. And it's, it's not the kind of expansion of business that you're thinking is going to cause the problem. It's actually University of California at Santa Barbara, as they continue to grow and as you add, you know, large buildings with boilers, there's just enough, there's not enough credits left in that air district for that expansion. And that, that's, that's a frightening thought because it's, it's not the smokestack industry you tend to think of. And I gave an update on portable equipment program, legislation. We, at CAPCOA, the Air Pollution Control Officers Association, had to fight off some legislation that would have allowed the use of this portable equipment at a stationary source in lieu of, let's say, grid power. And just to let you know that these engines in the portable, the statewide portable program are not as clean as the engines we would permit as a stationary source. Because they move around, they're subject to lesser engine emission limitations. And we also, there was an update on some of the issues they're having in Santa Barbara, the Santa Maria area at the agricultural urban interface. And boy, we've all had that problem in Ventura County, haven't we? This was a dust issue this time, but we've dealt with odors, we've dealt with phumigants.
You mean the sand from the ocean.
Well, that also, and then.
They've kind of backed off. The third time they brought that in because it's going to be tough to chase business out of the whole place. In essence, that's what that would do. But now they've kind of backed off and trying to figure out other ways. I suggested, why don't you have one person, employee, that goes out and checks on the people if they're camping and causing all that, charge them for a campground, you know, campsite, like you do anyone else. And then you could afford that and then check it without going through and restricting them completely from running all of the dooms. Anyway.
Okay. That covers it. Okay, that was receiving file. I'm sorry. Who made the motion? Brian tried to make it quickly. And the second was John Sharkey. All in favor? Aye? Aye? Okay. You're welcome. And cancellation December 11th.
Shall move.
Motion, there's a motion by Mr. Zaragosa, second by who?
Foy.
Foy. Mr. Foy. No objection to that motion? I don't hear one, so so ordered. That's canceled and there isn't a public comment card submitted. So we are adjourned till January. All, thank you. Good to see one, everyone. We'll go back into our board of supervisor meeting and complete that.
Yes.